Okay, so if you will bow with me in a moment of silence and out of respect and in honor of the things that are going on in our community and in our state and in our nation and in our world, please. Thank you all.
President, if you'll come forward.
Pleadges, to the five, the United States of America and to your republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're presenting to you tonight, on behalf of the City Commission, a key to the city of Danville. It would look very nice, very appropriate someplace on your uniform, but we assure you you would follow proper protocols.
Thank you.
But again, on behalf of all the citizens of Danville, we want to congratulate you on such an outstanding award. Eagle Scout is an Eagle Scout always. Thank you, ma'am.
What was your project?
Uh-oh.
Your project was what? You read it, the benches at the Humane Society.
Oh, okay. Congratulations.
I have to go out there and take a look.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks very much.
And then, Dan, as President, who stand up? I think two of her sisters are present.
And the chair is a good ass. Claire and Claire, two sisters. She's got four sisters. Two brothers.
Four.
All right, one more. Two brothers.
Well, congratulations to her and to all of your family.
Thank you, ma'am.
Job well done. Next on our agenda is, Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda, and I'd like to have the agenda as amended. I would like to move items number sixteen and seventeen to the top of the agenda right after the first read of public. So the Chair would like to...
The Chair would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you all. Any questions or comments here and none? All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all. Next on our agenda is, here the public, we invite citizens to come to our meetings and to speak, to talk to the City Commission. We only listen, we give back no feedback at this time, and at this point in our meeting, you can only talk to us about items that are on the agenda. Later on in our meeting, there's an opportunity to speak to us about anything you have or any concerns you have about our community, as long as it's something within our jurisdiction, something that's legal, so. Two opportunities tonight. So anyone wanted to speak to the Commission on things that are on the agenda? All right, thank you all again for your attendance. We'll move right along then. Mr. Morgan, Josh Morgan, you have the two items that are, we've moved to the top.
Yeah, thank you all for doing that. It's gonna help me be able to get to my son's football game, so.
All right.
I appreciate you all moving me to the top. Item sixteen, in your package, you have a letter from Boyle County Schools with a request to terminate the lease at Jenny Rogers for the Early Learning Center. In that letter, you'll see a list of items that they have left in the facility to remain with the facility. In exchange, it's kind of a goodwill exchange for terminating the lease. That was, it was a three-year lease at the time of signing last year, that would've extended into 2027, but we're in the process now, putting out an RFP for a new tenant, so hopefully in the next few months, we have that filled. This is, and we recommend acceptance of this termination offer from Boyle County Schools.
Thank you, sir. Chair would like to entertain a motion.
I'll move to, oh, I'll move to pre-resolution two zero two five oh eight two five oh two.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you like a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the Commission? This is a very, this is a very disappointing move we have to make tonight, because I know there's persons in our town, there's young children in our town who are very excited about the opportunity they had at Jenny Rogers, but we're hoping that we can regroup and put another group in that same facility. Okay? No comments or questions? All those in favor of accepting this resolution number twenty twenty-five oh eight twenty-five oh two, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Josh, the next one, please.
Yes, thank you. We were, the State Division of Water reached out to us about a month ago, and it notified us that we have to make a change to our floodplain ordinance to meet the National Flood Insurance Program requirements. So in your package, you have the change that is being required, that really changes the definition of substantial improvement, which to really go on the technical details of that, you know, if you have a structure that is in the hundred-year floodplain, you, they limit how much money you can spend on that structure without removing it from the floodplain. So if you're going to spend fifty percent of the market value on the structure, so what this really is preventing is preventing someone from taking a, something that you couldn't build new in the floodplain under current rules, they're not gonna let you renovate a rundown house that's in the floodplain. They're gonna make, they're gonna, okay, if you're gonna renovate this, you need to lift it up out of the floodplain, or move it back, you move it horizontally or vertically out of the flood zone. So that's where the term substantial improvement comes into play. They define that as spending fifty percent of the market value on the structure over a period of, over a duration of time. So it used to be one year, and now they're requiring that to be changed to five years. So if you spend five, you spend fifty percent of market value over a five-year period of time, you've met the definition of substantial improvement. This is a really technical thing about floodplains that rarely ever comes up here, because we just don't have a lot of that situation in Danville especially. So it's really, if we don't make this change, then we lose flood insurance coverage in Danville. It's kind of the end of the story, like, we have to do this, or we don't become part of the program anymore. So they require us to do this change.
Hearing that, the Chair would like to entertain a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty fifty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? And Madam Clerk, you want to read the ordinance, and then we'll do roll call vote, please?
Yes, this is the first reading of ordinance number twenty fifty-seven, an ordinance of the city of Danville, Kentucky, amending chapter six point five flood damage prevention and stormwater management, article two flood damage prevention, section six point five through twenty-one definitions of the city of Danville code of ordinances, in order to revise the definition of substantial improvement to be compliant with state regulatory compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. See you later. Good luck.
Before we go to the next item, I want to call everyone's attention to the fact that Commissioner Siri is not with us tonight. He's home resting, he's doing well, but I want to call your attention to that. And then I wanted to say a special thank you to Commissioner Peak. In my absence at the last meeting, she facilitated the commission meeting and had twenty-nine items on the agenda, and she got the meeting done in forty-five minutes, so what a great job! So appreciate you taking care of that for me, right?
I'm okay when you turn it over.
I bet you are.
I'll second that.
Well, Commissioner Holland, I think you do, you know, I know you gave her all that good advice, right? So I understand. Okay, next item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve our minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of eight eleven twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments? Ah, hearing none? All those in favor of approving our minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye? No, I'm not opposed, I just wasn't here, but thanks for approving the minutes. The next item is a retirement recognition from some guy, I don't know his name, but some old guy, but Mike McCurdy, you gonna come forward and do the recognition for us?
Oh, he's turned all around, huh? Cool, Jack.
Yeah, gotta get my audience in here.
All right, all right.
Well, thank you all, everybody, for being here. It's an honor and privilege to be here to represent Danville Fire Department today in recognition and honoring the retirement of Fire Chief Doug Simpson. Doug, you mind joining me up here? All right, so we're gathered here today to honor a remarkable man, a dedicated leader and someone who truly left a lasting mark on the city of Danville. Chief, today, we celebrate not just your retirement, but your incredible twenty-one-year journey as a firefighter. Twenty-one years of courage, sacrifice, service, twenty-one years of answering calls in the middle of the night, running towards danger when others ran away, protecting the lives and property of this community. Firefighting is not just a job, it's a calling. Chief Simpson, you've lived that calling with honor, integrity, and courage. You've been a steady hand in times of crisis, a mentor to countless men and women in the fire service, and a source of comfort to families in their most difficult times. Beyond the emergencies and long nights, you've built something even more important, you've built a family. The Danville Fire Department is stronger, braver, and better because of your leadership. You've set an example that will continue to inspire long after today. Your twenty-one years of service cannot be measured only in calls answered or fires put out, they're measured in lives saved, in the trust of the community, and in the bond and the brotherhood and sisterhood that defines our fire service. On behalf of the city of Danville, your brothers and sisters in uniform, and every life you've touched along the way, we thank you. As you step in this next chapter of your life, may you enjoy the rest and peace you've so deeply earned, spend time with your family, pursue your passions you've set aside, and know that your legacy here will never fade. Chief Simpson, congratulations on your retirement, thank you for twenty-one years of helpful service.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. They only gave me thirty minutes to speak, so I might try to keep this down. But no, I do appreciate the wonderful comments, it's been an honor serving these citizens of Danville, it's been an honor serving my staff, and everybody does a fantastic job. We're very fortunate, we have a great Commission, great city manager, we've done a lot of really good stuff in the last five years as chief, and I can't take any credit for it at all. It's all been our staff, and it's all been our management team. It's all been one team, and we've done a lot, and it's been wonderful, but twenty-one years goes by really quick, I hope the staff members know that, you're here before you know it, so enjoy your time, take care of yourself, and I really appreciate it. One other person I want to thank is my wife, Leah, she's not here today, she had to work, and also my son's first day seeing you here at UK, so he couldn't make it either, but I really appreciate them being beside me for twenty-one years, and hopefully we'll have longer, some good times together, so just want to thank the city, thank my staff, and really appreciate everyone, thank you guys.
So we have one more thing that we do as firefighters. So today, we have the honor of recognizing not only the retirement Chief Simpson, but the remarkable career and legacy he leaves behind after twenty-one years in the city of Danville. Chief, for more than two decades, you've worn a helmet as a symbol of duty, leadership, and sacrifice. The helmet has been with you through long nights, tough battles, and moments of triumph. It represents courage in the face of danger, calm in times of chaos, and unwavering commitment you've shown to the department and this community. As you retire, it's our privilege to present this helmet to you, not only as equipment for the next call, but as a last reminder of the calls you've already answered. It's a symbol of the brotherhood and sisterhood you've been part of, the lives you've touched and the difference you've made. This helmet is more than leather, more than leather and brass, it carries the stories, the victories, and the sacrifices of a twenty-one-year career. And now it serves as a keepsake of a job well done and a legacy well earned. Chief Simpson, on behalf of the Danville Fire Department and the community you so faithfully served, would present this helmet to you with deep gratitude, respect, and admiration, made always remind you of the courage you carry, the example you set, and the family you will forever be a part of. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Just kidding around, they must've cleaned this helmet up, it's usually really dirty.
Chief, don't go anywhere. We, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept or deny this letter of retirement. So is there, is there, is there a motion? Is there a motion from the Commission to accept this retirement?
Died for a legacy.
Or a first.
Well, yeah. Well, I'm just messing with you, we have a presentation from the City Commission, though.
I told him we only had four people present, and I paid two of them off to have a two-two vote, so it's good. They take it out on me tonight. You'd like to take a picture with Chief?
Yeah, thank you.
And I guess this has asked all the rest of the firefighters to come up and stand with us.
That'd be great.
Because, you know, that's your family, you've got families away from you, right?
Yeah. Thank you so much.
This is from the Commission?
Appreciate you so much, that's beautiful. Thank you so much.
You get one last year.
I'll go on a third.
See, he can't hold you all around his horse too.
Thank you all, appreciate you.
No, no, that's great. I won't worry about you around. We know where you live, and you're in the same place.
Doug, I just want to say, I saw you when you first came in as a firefighter, so, and you moved up the ranks, and many of them have, but I just really appreciate all that you've done throughout your career, from starting out and being as professional as you've always been.
And he hasn't changed since the first day?
No, he hasn't.
Okay, next on our agenda is a proclamation in honor of National Service Dog Month. Commissioner Cottle, you want to read the proclamation to us?
Yes, sir.
And we have a couple here who's gonna receive it from us tonight.
Okay, great. Proclamation for National Service Dog Month, whereas we believe in joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and inclusivity of all citizens, and whereas in the United States, seventy million adults have a disability, and only sixteen thousand service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and the need is growing, whereas K9 Companions created the concept of service dogs for people with physical disabilities fifty years ago in nineteen seventy-five, creating a new kind of support for disabilities, and whereas K9 Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with a greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing follow-up services, and a deeply committed community of support. And whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting their handlers, and whereas the city of Danville continues to work hard toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their trained service dogs are embraced. Now therefore, Mayor J. H. Atkins and the Board of Commissioners of the city of Danville do hereby proclaim the month of September, National Service Dog Month, and encourage the citizens of Danville to celebrate trained service dogs and be respectful of their rights to safe access in our community afforded to the adults, children, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of their assistance.
Thank you, sir. Fellow Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Is there a motion to accept this resolution?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You two want to come up and make a few comments? Introduce yourself to the community.
My name's Mark Herrick, and I'm here on behalf of K9 Companions, I'm a volunteer with the Kentucky group, currently raising a puppy, didn't bring him tonight because I didn't want to get in trouble. He's a handful. And at this point, I'd like to thank the mayor and the Commission for recognizing this, so on behalf of K9 Companions and all of the service dogs, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Got you hooked up, didn't you? Never knows, dude. That's all right, though.
I always feel, you see the service dogs walking around Walmart or wherever, I always want to pet them, I have to keep myself from doing it.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a dog, you want to pet it.
We have a resolution in honor of Citizen John Kaywood. Are you gonna read that? Do you have it? Oh, okay. You want to read it then? Give us two feet. All right. It's long, pretty long, yeah.
It is long.
You have faith in it.
A resolution honoring the extraordinary life of service at, of John B. Kaywood to the United States and to the Boyle County, Danville, Boyle County community. Whereas John B. Kaywood is the embodiment of a true public servant, a man who served our country with honor and distinction in the Vietnam War, where he was exposed to the long-term effects of Agent Orange and burn pits, carrying the burden of that sacrifice throughout his life. And whereas John Kaywood's commitment to service extended far beyond the battlefield as he was elected to public office for seven terms, serving with excellence as a magistrate for District Six of Boyle County, where he demonstrated wisdom, leadership, and an unwavering dedication to the people he represented. And whereas John Kaywood was a respected and influential figure in the Danville, Boyle County community, and was one of the original members of the Committee of Twelve, which was instrumental in initiating the community's Main Street program. And whereas John Kaywood's dedication to economic vitality and community development was further demonstrated through his longstanding involvement in the heart of Danville, where he served multiple terms on the Board of Directors and as Chairman of the Downtown Business Committee. He was also a founding member of the Community Development Council, recognizing the importance of a broad-based approach to local economic development. And whereas John Kaywood was a steadfast advocate for addressing substance use in our community, as a representative of the Boyle County Fiscal Court, he championed the work of the Boyle County Agency for Substance Abuse Policy, and was a vocal supporter of individuals who courageously overcame substance use disorders, celebrating their recovery and the programs that made it possible. And whereas John Kaywood's life was one marked with integrity, compassion, leadership, and a deep and abiding love for his country and his community, his tireless efforts, his kind and approachable nature, his belief in the power of public service have left an indelible mark on Boyle County and will long be remembered by those who had the honor of working alongside him. Now therefore, be it resolved that we do hereby honor the extraordinary life and legacy of John B. Kaywood, express our deepest gratitude for his decades of selfless service, and extend our heartfelt condolences to his family, friends, and all of those whose lives he touched. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to the family of John Beatty Kaywood as a token of our admiration and respect, and that his contributions never be forgotten by the community he so dearly loved. Adopted this twenty-fifth day of August, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a joint resolution in honor of our citizen, and it's gonna be signed tonight by the mayor, and it'll be signed tomorrow at the fiscal court meeting by the county judge, and then presented a copy to his family. So the Chair would entertain a motion to accept this joint resolution?
So moved.
Oh, second.
One second.
Thank you all. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution carries. Thank you all. Thank you, Donna, for your stuff. Next item is the banner request for Constitution Square Festival.
Mimi Becker has requested to hang a banner in front of City Hall leading up to the festival on the thirteenth of September.
May I ask you to approve it? What's your pleasure, Commissioners?
I move for approval of the banner request of the Constitution Square Festival.
Second.
Thank you all. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor of a banner being displayed in Constitution Square, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Banner request next for the park center, for light poles, decorations, banners. Somebody want to speak to that?
We just submitted a request to hang the same banners that get hung every year around this time.
Oh, no new banners?
No.
All right, well, the Chair would entertain a motion again to approve the park center light pole banners.
So moved.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Those poles, motion carries. Thank you all. Next item is first reading of ordinance number twenty fifty-five concerning four forty-seven South Third Street, a zoning change. Madam Clerk, want to read that for us?
Yes, this is the first reading of ordinance number twenty fifty-five, an ordinance changing the zone from two-family residential RM2 to central business CB for approximately zero point nine six nine acres, more or less of real property located at four forty-seven South Third Street in the city of Danville, Kentucky.
Thank you, ma'am.
I move for approval of the first reading of ordinance two oh five five.
Thank you, sir. There's a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? Roll call vote, roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Thank you all. Second reading for ordinance number twenty fifty-four, a joint zoning ordinance amendment.
This is the second reading of ordinance number twenty fifty-four, an ordinance of the city of Danville, Kentucky, amending article three point one point six of the zoning ordinance.
Danville, Kentucky, amending Article 3.1.6 of the zoning ordinance Boyle County, the cities of Danville, Junction City, and Parable, allowing an applicant's representation at a public hearing by an engineer upon proper authorization.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Thanks, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Clear and done? Roll call vote?
Mayor Atkins.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Pete.
Yes.
Thank you all. Next item is Danville Architectural Heritage Board reappointment. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the reappointment of Mr. Ty and Mr. Nogal through 2028.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Clear and done? All those in favor say aye.
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 Disposed, motion carries. Next item is a, an appointment to the cemetery board. Is there a motion for this appointment, these appointments?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mike Paris and Tammy Stipes to the cemetery committee. These are three-year terms.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments? Clear and done? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you all.
Tammy's here tonight, so.
Oh, is she?
Yeah.
Ah, there she is. She's hot.
Yeah.
We have another name for her. She knows who it is. Thank you, ma'am. She's been very faithful to coming and working with us on these things. Good. Uh, next item is an, an update from our Parks and Rec department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to put this back where I think Anthony has the camera on it, I think.
Thank you, sir.
Um, yes, I'm here to do a, a update on the, the, this year's capital project improvements. And before we do that, I'm going to ask Sarah Berry, our current park board, our park commission president, we'd like to recognize the service of some of our outgoing, uh, committee members. And so I'm going to let Sarah take that.
Can I get Mark and LaFonda to come up, please? We just wanted to officially honor Mark Morgan and LaFonda Stallworth with plaques honoring their service to the Parks Board over the years in the committee. Mark has been, was been on the board for four years, but feels like way more than that, that's when he's come in here. And both of them are outstanding members of our community. They have done so much for Parks and Rec over the last, seems like the last decade. So we just wanted to officially honor you all and just thank you for your service and wish that you could stay on board many more years, but I know you have other important things you want to do too. So, Mark, that is for you, and LaFonda, that is for you. Thank you guys so much. Do you want a picture with them?
Yes, ma'am.
I can understand honoring Mark, it's LaFonda I'm having an issue with.
Oh, snap. I don't need to be in it.
You got to get it to the jump. All right. It's all good. (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Yeah, what?
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Uh, it's not like we won't be seeing them. I think LaFonda's already been appointed to another county board, and Mark, Mark works diligently with the Trails Committee and is very involved in the first project I'm going to talk about. So at the July meetings, we were given a task. We had several and kind of unprecedented amount of projects that the county and city have gone in together this year. Uh, we're very excited. This is part of the job I love. Uh, and we have several of them. Then I'm going to start with the, the Alam Springs Mountain Bike Park. This is going to be later. You don't have to worry about those slides for now. The Alam Springs Mountain Bike Park, which the city committed $125,000 to, uh, put out an RFP and has accepted a bid from Parsons Construction Services. They're out of Greenboro, Kentucky, so they're very, very, I want to say their owner is a BMXer from way back. He's a national champion at Lindsey Wilson. Uh, he's got a great love for it. He's been on the site for many years, uh, helping us develop it from the beginning, but he was also the low bid, which, because his passion for this kind of park, he's built them all around, but he's never really gotten one built in Kentucky. So, um, he's really excited to come. We had three or four bids. He was the low bid, uh, and again, I'm going to say he gave us a hometown discount. So moving forward, we are going to the whole committee, which, um, it's a very large committee. Uh, we have Rick Serra sits on it for, for the city commission. Uh, of course, Mark is there with the Trails Commission. We have the, we have the Boyle County Mountain Bike Team, which I didn't know they had a team, they do have a team. Uh, their coach sits on that board, of course, Julie Wagner, Judge Bottom sits on that along with Paula Bodner and Jason from Magistrates. So it's a big committee. We've actually moved forward very well, uh, and hopefully it, it steamrolls into other projects we're doing together. What's happening right now is we are in the design. According to Julie, we plan to break ground here, uh, in October, uh, and with a completion of the project in October of '26, I believe. Is that correct, Mark? Yeah. And, uh, we don't have a name yet. That's one thing we're working on, so if you've got any catchy names, we're, we're working on that. But, uh, that, that project is full steam ahead at a 1.1 million, which the county at this point has, has, has not balked at and has not batted an eye at. So it is all, uh, all steam ahead on that. The second project we're working at, and these are all kind of jumbling together, but we're working through them, is the rehab of two, three baseball fields, softball fields at Millennium Park. They are, fields three and four at baseball and field one at softball. Uh, we've awarded the bid for material. Uh, the RFP is out and, uh, letters are due September 2nd. The work will begin in mid-October, and this is a $150,000 joint effort between the city and county with each putting in 75. And we are on target to have this completed and finished by, uh, early December. We have to wait till, we have a very small window where the last baseball game, I believe, is October 13th, and the work should start the next day, and we're, we're looking at probably a two-month job there. Hopefully, the weather works for us. Millennium Park Playground Improvements is a joint effort of $100,000 with 50,000 committed from city and county. Uh, the goal is to replace the two small features that have been worn out, and the main project is a poured-in-place surface instead of the wood chips for the main huge pro, uh, playground. Uh, there's also a shade structure we'd like to add and some in-house touch-up work. A project like this, uh, you know, we were thrown out some money of how much would it cost. We've consulted with, uh, Bluegrass Recreation last week. Uh, we did some site visits and we talked about what we wanted to do, and he thinks we can be well within that budget. So we are deciding how, if we're going to put a RFP out or go with state contracts, uh, but we'll work on that. That project is looking like early spring, uh, to be completed. But again, we're going through the R and D on it right now. Butler Park Playground is basically, we're waiting on a, a matching grant from the, from the state. Uh, hopefully it'll be in this fiscal year. Uh, the city has committed $80,000, which would be a matching grant to that, and that's replacing the Butler County Playground. Millennium Park Site Furnishings, uh, we, we, uh, we've done an R and D on that. We've talked to several, mainly on that project is, is, is the, the 30-year-old buildings. Uh, we want to do some improvements on that and park safety. Uh, so the main part of that is all the doors and all our concession stands are all broken and kind of in disrepair. It's 19 doors total. Uh, they're very expensive, so, uh, right now, we've, we've found out the expense of them, so we are going to have to put out an RFP on that. Uh, Josh is going to work on that and have that out, hopefully within a week. We've gotten some estimates from locals. We've contacted three or four door companies, but that's going to be the main portion of that, uh, which is a joint $50,000, uh, project. So what, what that project's going to entail is replacing all existing doors. Um, we are adding additional cameras, uh, because the camera systems are all old and outdated. Um, we are also making sure we have AEDs on all buildings, where right now, we, I want to say we just have them on one. So, and we're going to put them in boxes on the outsides of buildings, so if, they're always available. Uh, and the other thing I'm really excited on that is, uh, IT department is working on, uh, mechan, uh, magnetic locking, magnetic programmable locking bathroom doors, uh, which we've been doing that at Jeanne Rogers, uh, and we've, because right now, those bathrooms are open almost all the time. So we'd like to be able to program them, that they lock up at 11:00 at night, and they open at 5:00 in the morning. Um, we're, we'll be able to program and adjust them if we have an event going on. Uh, if you're in the bathroom at 11:00 when the goes off, there's still a bar you can push, so you won't be locked in there all, all, all winter, but, uh, that is basically that, that project, that is an in-house. We won't be using an architect, we won't be using a general contractor. Uh, we expect that project to be completed, uh, this winter. Another one is, this one's not very romantic, but it's the, uh, uh, roof repair at Jeanne Rogers. Josh is working on that. Uh, I believe, yes, he has an RFP out. It's due September 2nd. Uh, I've met with the roofing company today. I'm meeting with another roofing company tomorrow, so we will pretty much move ahead on that, um, as soon as we get the bids in, uh, hopefully get it in before the winter. Uh, this is a city-only commitment. Uh, the county, uh, did not procure any funds for that. And the last one we're working on, this is a lot for one year. It's, we're hitting a, we're hitting a lot of, lot of genres here, that is the Millennium Park Skateboard Park. Initially, the, uh, city, let's see here, went in, uh, 150,000, but the county decided they'd put in 250 with the preference of it being a concrete skateboard park instead of what we have now is a steel ramp. Um, this means you'd have, and I'm going to show you some slides from both companies we've contacted. Because this is such a niche, you know, uh, build, you know, there's, there's, there's not a lot of people that can do this kind of thing. I can't profess that I know how you'd build a skateboard park, so we've really reached out to some people to tell us what we can do for the amount of money we have. Uh, so Hunger Skateboard Parks is out of Indiana, and then we've also been working with American Ramp Company to kind of just show us what we can do with that kind of money. So we're going to go through a few slides that they've sent it, uh, and we've met them both on-site. One thing to consider with this, we've talked to them, they're all booked out, again, because it's such a niche, uh, field, they're all booked for a year. Um, they both said that they possibly could get us in, uh, late summer, early fall next year. So we're kind of trying to get, and they both said that they've got a lot of projects. So, uh, Josh is really, now that we've met with both, seen what we can do, Josh feels he can do, uh, an RFP and get it out here. We've told them, like, with the first week of September is get the RFP documents out. So what we're looking at here, this is in Eckhart Park, Indiana. So when I'm, when I'm talking about, uh, concrete skate parks, you're talking about these dips and bowls and stuff like that. So this second picture is kind of an overhead view of it. This was built in 2020, uh, for $350,000 approximately. Uh, so there's going to be a little add-on there, but this is, uh, 13,000, 13, 13,500 square foot. Our footprint is about, uh, 900,000 or 900 square feet. So this is a bigger park than ours, but it's, you know, built for 350. So when we saw this, we were like, hey, we can, we got, we got the funds that we think we can do here. Um, is this going to work? I don't think it's moving. Is Anthony back there? Can you move it forward? Or I got to hit something here. There we, this is New Albany, right across from Louisville, another of Hunger's projects. Uh, the second picture there, you can kind of see the overlay. This one doesn't have a lot of bowls, but instead of the ramps made of steel and, and it's made of concrete, which according to them, you know, steel has gone up incredibly, where concrete hasn't gone up as much. And we'll move forward if, I don't know if I'm moving forward. This, this, this is my favorite one of them, although I don't think we'd have nearly as big as bowls. Uh, this was built in 2019, 13,000 square foot, done for $420,000. This is a pretty epic skateboard park. So when we've met with both of these places, that, for the amount of money that we've got put into it, they're saying we're going to have the nicest skateboard park within 100 miles diameter. Um, so we're pretty excited about that. Uh, going on to the next. This is American Ramp Company. Now, these, these prices, they're giving us, these are, uh, current prices. So this is, he, he gave us three, a neighborhood, a regional, and, and a, a national kind of size. So this is a 4,000 square foot for $300,000, uh, which, this has got kind of the layout of ours with a bowl added to it. It's very similar. Uh, it's a little smaller, ours would be a little bigger, but again, you're losing those kind of, those kind of ugly ramps we have everywhere and going to concrete. This is a regional one, uh, so this one's really expensive. This is a, basically an $800,000 park, uh, but it's a lot bigger than what we want. Um, it's got a pump track added on there. Uh, it's, it's a lot bigger. American Ramp Company, if I go to the next one, uh, this is, this is the one that I thought was very, more similar to what we want to get. Uh, it's got the street flow and it's got the concrete bowl aspect to it. So these are the companies we're working with. Basically, the committee overseeing this is, is myself, Josh, Magistrate Jason Cullen, and then I've recruited two local skateboarders, uh, that are also helping with this. And both companies say when they come in, they do a community surveys, and they, and they say that's, even though we said, hey, no, we got the money, we're ready to go, they say it's very important for us to reach out to the community and make sure we're putting in something we want. So as soon as we get the RFP out, we feel both these companies will bid on it, uh, and we're hoping maybe another. And so I'd say within a month, we should be getting into the design phase of this and moving forward with hopefully, uh, completion project this time next year. So we're hoping by this time next year, all these projects are completed, and it's, it's So, we're hoping by this time next year, all these projects are completed, and it's a big task. So, we're very excited about it. And that's all I had for you on this one. If you guys got any question or any concerns that you'd like to...
Commissioners, any comments or questions?
You're all good?
Those are all positives.
Yeah, it's moving forward.
Our skateboard park is there, if some people remember here. I don't know if Earl was here, but Paul Simoncon, remember? And Janet, we remember. The city, actually, and the city and county, Jamie Gay was the commissioner, they went out and put the park together. So, it was really a, the pieces were bought, fundraiser happened, and then they, everybody went out and put it together. So, that's how long it's been there.
And like I said, I've been told by even the mountain bike park and the skateboard park, we will have the nicest ones in 100-mile radius, 100-mile diameter. So, there will be people coming from all over to visit these parks.
And the designs will come back to us before they start on all these, right?
Absolutely. With this, with the skate park, for sure. Absolutely. I mean, the mountain bike park, it'll come to that committee. I can always come back once they, if they've approved of a design, I'll bring it to you and show it to you and go through it.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Back when we did that small one we have now, seems like the reason we didn't do a larger one had something to do with the insurance. Is that not a factor anymore?
No, that's not a factor anymore, but the, not in the same way. I mean, you have to do something correctly, otherwise you're at risk. But the last time, there was some buy-in that we were struggling with, and there was a lot of community, you know, trying to get something out there. And I think that skateboarding's mainstream, honestly, and so there's a lot of, there's a lot of interest in this, to be honest.
You won't catch me on it, but it's...
You won't catch me.
I was out there with the, I drove out to meet the skateboard park, and there's a guy doing all kinds of tricks. Well, come to find out, he is the lead designer, graduated at UK, he lives in Duka, just like the mountain bike park. He's been building all these parks in Indiana and wishes he could build one in Kentucky. But while I'm on it, showing it to him, a family of six just came up with their little razor bikes, and they must have been like four or five years old. They're doing it too, so.
So, that's a good compliment. A park like this is a little bit more multifaceted in that you can do the razors, and you do, you don't want them necessarily crashing into each other, but the mountain bikes can ride around on this a little bit more efficiently. The metal units that we have out there now don't really, it's a challenge to get multi-uses out of it, and this is not the same. If we do a good job with the design, it's a lot more flexible.
Does the concrete...
Skateboard, skateboard, scooters, bikes, roller beds, everything.
Does the concrete, it doesn't, I guess, like the metal will stay there. The concrete, does it crumble or how much repair is in it?
No, and they use specialty concrete when they do it. And the idea is, we will probably demo that whole slab and start over. And I asked them, is it better to build your concrete up or is it better to go down? And he said, better and cheaper to go down, dig down, which we're going to decide, we worry about there might be some rock there, but we're hoping it looks, if you know that area, it looks, you might as well, they built that up.
Yeah. It's a good situation. You really only need about three feet to four feet to really make some obstacles. The ones, and full disclosure, my son's pretty much an advocate of it as well. But, you know, even what he'll tell, so we've gone to different ones, and you'll see the three feet. You really just, you don't need it, six, eight feet. You don't need that. You've got to have good flow. There's words like that that these guys use, and it's, they're correct. There's differences in correctly laid-out skate parks and incorrectly laid-outs. And you can see a skateboarder in it that knows. And so, our skate park really gets a lot of attention because it is laid out well. And there's others that are concrete around us that are close, that are not laid out well, and the skateboarders will avoid those and come to the damble one even though its features have been there a long time, but it's laid out well. And for a skateboarder, I don't know, I've never tried it, but that's the, that's the feedback we get. And so, there's a lot of energy in the skateboarding community about this.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question of him, like on the bill, it's about the park, where that play, the playground slide replacement, it says the baseball, is that out at Millennium?
The baseball fields?
A slide replacement, was that out at Millennium?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's it. Yeah, it's at Millennium.
Okay.
I think we got a slide on today.
Okay.
It's trying to repair a 20-year-old playground with new equipment. It's a long story, but it's not a hard one.
Okay, no, I just, okay.
I think we got it in today, I think they have to, they got it today, they have to take it down and then put the legs on it, pour the concrete, we're going to put it back in tomorrow, so I'm hoping it's done here by May.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thanks for that great report. Man. Next on our agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Before Tommy gets up, I'll jump down into my list and talk about the parks update. Knowing, understanding that Tommy and Josh's plate's been full, I've picked up some of the conversation and carried it to different folks and worked around the ideas. We got this layout for Millennium Park in front of you. What we did was, we broke down the things that we were trying to accomplish into different components, and then we tried to find, you know, like we had been doing, not just preferred locations, but best-fit options, best-fit options that aligned with each other, but also gave you more flexibility down the road, both in implementation. And so, we're, this idea that's in front of you, which is simply moving the basketball courts, expanding the skate park, when you get into it and the way this is illustrated to you, you start to see a lot more opportunity to locate different things there. And so, this graphic, we emailed it to you a few weeks ago, this continues to be the draft, and it seems like this morning, we met with our folks, with county judge and some others, and it seems like this idea still has a lot of support, and it seems to be the preferred option for these specific features in that you've got pickleball, you've got potential parks office, aquatics solution. It enhances the access to the skate park, enhances access to sand volleyball, so that if you've got somebody going to the park and they see the sand volleyball court, you could possibly have a park office there to hand out a volleyball, for example. So, there's a lot of things like this. We want to meet with Tommy and Josh about it. We'll bring this back to you in two weeks, but I wanted to make sure we had it in front of you rather than just an email, but to talk about it for a minute. And it's there. The pickleball community seems to have some nuances to it, but liked it. And so, I think that, I think that this is something that we can present to you as the most preferred option for these specific features. And so, we'll update that at the next meeting, probably we'll have time to get through this with Tommy, but we wanted to get this in your hands so you can start thinking about it. And if you have any questions, in the meantime, you're welcome to come back to us. And I know it's energizing to talk about, and I see some heads bobbing. If you all have any questions, you're welcome to shoot them our way, but we'll have a better presentation, an actual presentation for you in two weeks. But I wanted to make sure, since it was well-received this morning, that we had it in front of you, just for the record.
One thing you had on that, too, is if you do the aquatics there...
Tom, would you come to the mic?
If you do the aquatics there, and it has that retractable roof that we're talking about, that it's open year-round, and that means that we have, just like at the Bunny Davis, we have a staff on duty from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So, you know, that means there's bathrooms open, that means there's a lobby, that means there's staff there at all times. So, that's a good feature for, if that's all put there, it's going to be an active area, so it's something to think about.
So, we'll formalize an actual presentation and put it up on the screen and pick it apart, but...
Ginny Rogers, I mean, we were talking about the pool at Ginny Rogers, I didn't know or thought of possibly, and I guess I don't know if that's gone or we're just going to talk about that next time?
I think, so the aquatics concept, just to do a dive into that, is hard to understand and hard to communicate. So, and here's why. Because when you have, the idea of doing neighborhood pools, two neighborhood pools is still a good idea. So, Ginny Rogers would be a site where we would still propose a pool in the future. This site, what happens is, you have a capacity of, you're going to need like 900 swimmer capacity in your aquatics. And so, what happens is, you can, by having two pools, it makes it easier to satisfy your total capacity need. That's a derivative of how many kids you have in the community. I don't want to go too deep because that makes me sound like a nerd and it's going to confuse everybody. But the idea of the pool here, then, allows you to generate revenue from the tourism that's coming to Millennium Park while still accomplishing one of your neighborhood pools. And so, it's going to be accessible during the summer, but it's also, you're going to be able, on a Saturday, when your park is full with visitors, you can build in a little bit of reserve capacity at this location and take advantage of those visitors that are coming to Millennium Park for baseball, softball. And I hope that makes sense, which is why ultimately, I think, this probably is the best place for the outdoor pool on that side of town. You build it to the correct size as you go through the design process. You decide that ultimately. But again, that's, some of those things are what led us to creating this concept and discussing that with others that are, that have, like the pickleball folks and the county, and just trying to see what, is this the idea that everybody is gelling around? And as we go through those individual groups, this does make the most sense to everybody we've spoken to so far. So, now, what our responsibility is, is to present that to you guys. We'll do that more formally with more granular information on the other things that we considered. We'll do that in a couple of weeks. This is by no means final. What we'd like to do is get this information in front of you, start having that conversation. Two weeks, we'll follow up with you. Then, at the end of September, have a joint meeting with the city and county so that you all can sit down with your county compatriots and talk about these specific things and arrive at whatever conclusion you all want. But we think, we think, we think we've carried the conversation far enough to where we can get alignment and all parties can agree. The big thing is here, the county feels ownership of these facilities, so you're going to maintain a relationship with them financially. You're going, they're, at the same time, it gathers the most widest net we could cast, really.
Who did the drawings of this?
We had John Cody do it for us, right.
But the county's already been presented, though?
Not the fiscal court, no. We talked about it with the county judge, and Jason was made aware of it, yeah. And that he's taken the highest interest in the skate park, the highest interest in pickleball on behalf of the county. So, yes, we met with the county judge. At her permission, we went and met with Jason, talked to him about it a little bit, and made sure the things that he was calling his constituents had buy-in in his mind, and as well as the county judge. And so, we feel like that there's enough alignment there that the fiscal court would rally behind the idea, and we believe that this being the winning solution for you guys as well. But like I said, we'll start that conversation in two weeks. I just wanted to make sure, since I had emailed it to you that we presented it, Tommy was going to be here, we just felt like it was a good time to start talking about it more It's purely a concept at this point, but what I'm raising awareness of is that this seems like the concept that's getting the most support around us from other participants. Certainly, we don't want to bring something to you that we think the other participants won't like, right? So, we did talk to a lot of different people about it, yeah.
Other questions or comments? You have other things in your City Manager Report?
I sure do. We can get started on those.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I won't ask my question, but when we get our presentation in two weeks, can you also touch on funding partners, so we know how we're going to fund? And also, the Parks Committee stated that the indoor facility was the number-one need and where that might have a place, just in two weeks. If that can be included, that would be wonderful.
We are working on that as quickly as we can. We do have a solution for that, and so, we'll hopefully in two weeks be able to bring all that together for you. Yep.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We got some dates highlighted for you. The biggest thing that has come in is September 1st is Labor Day, city halls closed. Before that, though, on August 28th, your mayor is going to have coffee with the public at the Waffle Shop. We'll point that out to push through the conversation. We do have an audit update. Staff has received a draft. Lee and I have gone through it, working on it, and we do anticipate a final version being delivered in a couple of weeks. Problem is, we will have to work through their schedule to get it aligned with our schedule to make sure we get it presented in front of you all in a timely fashion. Realistically, looking at the calendar, it will probably be the end of September or the first meeting in October, which is probably what I would circle, looking at staff's ability to attend that meeting. The second thing is, is that I would like to show you the award that the city got on May 20th of 2025 in Washington DC. It is the ACE, the American Society of Engineering Companies Engineering Excellence Award for your Main Street. Gretchen Smith finally got that to us. They were able to attend the conference and bring that to us. I want to highlight that and highlight the effort of everybody, including the people that had businesses on Main Street that had to endure the project. And so, we appreciate all parties involved that led to that outcome, and it does include everyone. The, one request we have is we are asking permission to draft a letter and allow the mayor to sign a request to add a Huey to the Veterans Memorial Park out at the fairgrounds. We know there's a tank out there, and there's a big gun out there. We are wanting to, and discuss with the veterans groups, the addition of a piece of equipment. And so, at this time, we would ask permission for the mayor to sign a letter requesting a Huey, and we'll see where that goes. There's no guarantee that you'll get one ever, but we want to begin the pursuit of that officially.
You want a motion?
We, I would like that authorization just for, because I don't know what else...
Commissioners, wish your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A letter request.
The letter that the mayor can sign, requesting a Huey for Veterans Park.
Second.
Thank you all. I think, any other questions or comments?
Do we need to mention that Jack Hendricks is the POC of the project, is what he said in the letter?
You can't, yeah. I mean, that will be in the letter. But yeah, we are working with Jack Hendricks, who is the point of contact for the park as it relates to the military equipment that's out there, and will be for this Huey.
Okay, we moved in second. Any other comments or questions? Here and now, all those in favor of the mayor doing the letter of request, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries.
That's all I got.
Next on our agenda is our second, here the public, where folks can be recognized and can speak to us for three minutes or less about things that are not on our agenda. I guess you can talk, well, things not on our agenda this time. Anyone? Yes, ma'am. Want to come to the microphone and identify yourself in three minutes or less?
Sure. Hello, my name is Stacy Barton. I'm Communications Director at Art Center of the Bluegrass. Laura's here with me tonight, too. She's our executive director. And I'm just coming here to let you all know about Run for the Arts. It's coming up on September 14th. That's a Sunday, the day after Constitution Square Festival. It's the 47th Annual Constitution Square 5K Run for the Arts, so it's been around for a little while. Registration is open online at our website, which is artcenterky.org. And you can also register the day of the race at 3:30 in Wyseger Park. The race will start at 5:00 PM at Constitution Square, and it runs through beautiful historic Danville. You can walk, you can run, you can dance, skip, whatever you want to do. We just want you to come out for it. Any level of proficiency is fine, and all funds do benefit the Art Center and our goal of providing low-cost programming, arts programming and education. So, that's all. I just wanted to let you all know about that.
Registration fee?
Pardon?
Registration fee?
Oh, it's $35. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here the public? Yes, sir.
I've got it, me and Garrett for a few minutes.
I've got it, me and, uh, Harris for a few minutes.
Pennsylvania? You going to Pennsylvania?
Good to see you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else? After hearing from the public, now it's time to hear from the commissioners. Any commissioner updates and comments?
I want to say thank you to Public Works, um, for the sidewalks out at the new crosswalk on the bypass. They've been out there, I mean, thanks, well, thanks to staff for listening, the people that contacted us to ask for that crosswalk. Um, they are very appreciative. And the state, Jennifer Kirchner, Josh Morgan Earl, um, and Kelly Baker for getting that completed because it's really been used a lot. I saw kids from Center Today using it and, um, some kids on bikes. And then like last week, I guess, Public Works was out there and did the sidewalk on both sides. So it's really nice out there. So I appreciate the work that they did.
Other comments? The KLC days, the last part of September? 22nd?
Yeah, the week of the 22nd. That's a pretty important week, mayor, just so you know.
Not my birthday week.
Yeah, might be somebody else's.
Well, I, I think we ought to give a shout out for the Junction City First and Airport, for the efforts and the balloon race yesterday. I want to wear my tie, it's not too hot, we're tied there yesterday, so I saved it for today. But, uh, uh, with, the weather was nice to a certain degree, but it didn't cooperate for the launching of balloons. But, uh, major crowd in attendance. And, uh, the city, uh, was well, was well, uh, ex, the city was there in numbers, our city employees, from the rec department to the police department to the fire department to, uh, some of the city staff and some of the commissioners and our families and everything else. But, uh, I kept waiting for my balloon ride and, uh, didn't quite get it yesterday, but I'll try again, okay? Other comments? Hearing none? Let's move right along. Next item is paying the bills. Chair would entertain a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $650,190.76.
Thank you, ma'am. For a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of paying our bills, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Resolution 202508, 2501, CLG grant acceptance. Ms. Compton?
So I am, uh, handling this on behalf of Ms. Joanie House, um, who is our, um, Architectural Heritage Board staff member who's housed under P&amp;Z. She, uh, had a commitment, could not make it tonight. Uh, but also, um, because DHAB is a city board, um, despite us moving it under, um, P&amp;Z operationally, the funds related to this grant would be processed through the city. Um, so we would manage that on their behalf. Um, but they were awarded, um, they have been awarded a CLG grant, which is Certified Local Government, um, in total of $12,480, um, with a match of $8,320, um, which is going to be utilized, um, to update the design guidelines for the signage and public art in the H1 overlay downtown historic district. Um, the, the guidelines, um, need to be updated to align planning and zoning rules and DAHB guidelines, um, so that they are similar in nature and to create a one-stop, uh, signage for the district.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion?
Move for approval of resolution 202508, 2501.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments?
Hope not many, because that's, I read what Joanie wrote. That's all I got.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. First reading of ordinance number 2056, property tax rate. Ms. Compton?
So in your packet, you have, um, a copy of the current ordinance. You have a memo from myself. You have some, um, property tax revenue projections, uh, for the year. You have the county's assessment. It's a big packet. You have, um, some, um, analysis of other rates. And then you have the calculation and we will go over that, uh, for you and the public. Um, so for historically and for budgeting purposes, the city has utilized the compensating rate, uh, for many years. And for information to the public, the compensating rate, um, is a tax rate that provides the city a similar level of revenue, um, compared to the prior year. And the growth that the city receives in revenue is based on new properties in the city. Effectively, what that means for a homeowner is that your property tax rate for the city of Danville, and this is city of Danville specific, I won't speak to anybody else's rate, but your property tax rate for the city of Danville has gone down since 2017. Uh, based on our 2526 budget, we budgeted based on utilizing that compensating rate, projecting a growth of new property, um, to the city. So what that does to your rate is compared to 2024, where your real property was set at .122 for $100,000 for real property, your compensating rate for 2526 would go down to .1190. Your personal property or your tangible property, which was set at .1584 per $100 for personal property, goes to .1595. Tangible is a little bit different. That is not your home. Um, that is, um, property that is not affixed to the ground. Um, your rate for motor vehicles, which also includes boats, would be .2000 per $100 and that is flat. That rate has been capped by the state since the eighties.
So by your explanation, we're not raising taxes. We're lowering the rate, but because my property may go up.
If you're, if, if the city commission elects to utilize the compensating rate, um, your rate would go down on your home. Um, if you pay additional value in taxes, it's because the assessment done by the PVA has increased. That happens many, many years, um, just due to home sales, um, things like that in your neighborhood.
And this was what we approved in the budget?
This is what she approved in the budget. Um, we are projecting in real property revenue, um, $1,688,924. Um, that's a $26,000 increase from the prior year, um, revenue. Um, the prior year assessments revenue, um, increase from your prior year actuals was a, is, the projection is about 1,000. Occasionally, um, your projections frequently are, um, higher than your actuals due to a couple of things. Number one, unfortunately, some people don't pay early on their, um, tax bill and they don't get that discount. They, some of them pay late and they unfortunately owe us some penalties and interest. Um, you also have what are franchise tax bills and those are not assessed by your PVA. You see the biggest swing in those, um, revenue numbers in your tangible tax. If you look at your, on your memo, um, the, the difference in 2024 of 513,000 in tangible tax versus our projection of 242, you had about $300,000 last year, um, in franchise taxes that the PVA does not assess. So we don't get those assessments in. We can't predict how much in franchise, um, tax bills we're going to get. Um, that's also processed through the sheriff's, um, office, uh, but that's a fully separate tax account compared to your normal property tax bills. Um, so total, total, um, real estate and tangible tax revenue that we're, um, assessing, or I'm sorry, that we're projecting is $1,931,679,000. With a slight increase projected of 15,000 in your motor vehicles. So also within your packet, we do have kind of the, the larger comparison of your tax rates going back to, your projections back to 2022. You also have within there the actual assessments, um, from the PVA for the current year. Um, total assessments of real property, we're at, uh, that's a assessed value. So your tax rate is, uh, cents per $100 of assessed value. Total assessment's $1,728,598,255 citywide, which is a increase, I don't have total increase, but it's a pretty good increase, uh, about 13 million increase from the prior year. That's going to be from your new developments. Um, as they assess property as of January 1st. So potentially something like a Chick-fil-A, depending on when they got finalized and built, will impact you greatly. New this year in your packet is also a assessment that we need to look at long-term, which is your, um, your unrealized opportunity cost essentially of, by not raising your rates, how that impacts us as a city, but also how that impacts the individual homeowner. So for instance, since 2021, if you had raised the rate 4%, um, an individual homeowner of a home that cost $110,000 would have paid an additional 3850 on their home over those, uh, five years. Um, this is just a good financial planning tool to see long-term how, um, by not raising the rates, what that does to us financially, because we do have to consider that. It's, it's always a choice of what is best for the city financially, what is best for your constituents. Um, but that is the un, the unearned potential is part of that equation that we do have to keep in mind.
Thank you, ma'am.
So within your packet, in the memo, it does have your recommendation for setting your compensating rates. And again, for the public, that is based on budget. .1190 for your real property, .1595 for personal tangible property and .2000 for motor vehicles. That's a lot. So what questions do you have?
Well, the big question is that the, the rate's gone down. I may pay a little bit more because my home has increased in value.
Well, it's not just that. It's also new, new, um, assets added to the, to the inventory. So when someone builds a house this year, you'll collect that at a different, so, so part of, part of that minor, if, if there is a variance in a positive direction for, for the city in terms of property taxes received, it's because of the new growth that, that, uh, doesn't exist right now. So the, the compensating rate's designed to generate essentially the same number. And it varies because of growth typically, whether it be reassessments or new construction.
And Lee, you have that in our packet, that it was in there about the revenue generated, possibly on new property.
Yes, uh, so that is on, if you're looking in your packet, so you, that would be page, page five of PDF, of the PDF. Um, it has, uh, sides landscape with some blue highlights on it. So it, on your new growth, um, you have 13 million in new growth, um, which would be about $15,000 compared to last year of 8 million in new assessments of about 10,000.
Okay, I think the chair is, um, in need of a motion to approve, uh, the setting of the tax, the new tax rate, because it has changed, going down. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2056.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second?
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions or comments?
I just really appreciate, Lee, you going back nine years and showing us how it's changed and gone down. So, um, we, I get a lot of questions about tax rates, so thank you.
I think that's something we could share on our website that's a positive, that shows that the rates have went down, have gone down.
Uh, my, let's see, wait, wait. Did you, did you read the ordinance from me?
I have not yet.
Would you read it, please, ma'am? Into the record?
This is, this is the first reading of ordinance number 2056 and ordinance establishing ad valorem tax rates for fiscal year 2025 through 2026 and penalties for non-payment.
Thank you, ma'am.
I move for approval of the first reading of ordinance 2056.
We have that already, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. You did.
A roll call vote.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Mayor Atkins?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, is that clock right, right there? 6 o'clock? Commissioner Pete, do you keep that timing, man? 6 o'clock? Oh, I heard that. Is there a need? There is not a need for the executive session.
We have one more item.
We have another.
What? Oh, Chief Gray, I'm sorry. I was trying to beat the clock. See, Ashley gave me that look.
Mayor Commission, you have, uh, resolution 202508, 2503. Uh, this is reference a, uh, a contract, reference a grant that was awarded for dispatch at the last commission meeting. Uh, this resolution just recognizes total response. It will be the vendor that will be integrating that grant for dispatch.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution 202508, 2503.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any other, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ma'am, there is not.
There is a need for personnel, be, be sure.
For the executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right. The chair would like to entertain a motion not going to, go into executive session. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61811F.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Could I amend the motion and say no longer than 15 minutes?
You say that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Were y'all tough?
Were y'all tough?